And everybody, we're going to go ahead and get started with our FY26 budget deliberations. Today's date is July 11, 2025. The time is 1:31 PM. In attendance are Commissioners Eberlein, Duncan, and Matarri. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing none. Public comment. Come on down.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Ron Hartman for the record. First off, I'd like to thank Commissioner Matarri for attempting to hold a constructive workshop yesterday over at Hayden City Council, and it was anything but constructive. We have a saying at Ford Motor Company, "It pays to make house calls," and that came out very clear yesterday in the house call made by the Commissioner. The total lack of respect towards the Commissioner and our Sheriff is inexcusable. The total lack of any type of appreciation to all the county taxpayers, which would subsidize what they don't cover in the law enforcement that they're requesting or currently have, is unacceptable to me as a taxpayer. Therefore, my position is funding anything over in what they pay for just supports this kind of behavior. And the only way to change this behavior is to change who's elected. And as long as the people that are elected are supported by this type of behavior, it's not going to change. I'm going to leave you with one of the behaviors that was presented at the meeting. I believe this was conducted at our Sheriff. There's many more.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. And just as a side note, I appreciate the kind words, but I thought the meeting was a spectacular success, in my opinion, and that we did make a lot of progress. So, and we'll see in the coming weeks. Anybody else? Public comment? Nope. Okay. We'll move into our one and only business item, FY26 budget deliberations. It's an action item, and who would like to start?
I'll start. Brandy Falcon for the record. I'm going to start with our preliminary summary, which you have printed in front of you. So this is the version without a COLA included, and currently at a 3% tax increase, we're at a surplus of $396,000. Something that's very important to take into consideration when looking at this is that I have completely removed all Hayden revenues from our budget at this point. They have an amazing finance team and city administrators, so I'm confident that they're working on getting a number back to the county that the Board can consider to budget, and they are well aware of our budget deadlines and meeting dates. And so I'm confident they'll come back to us with a figure. But for now, just to be on the safe side and conservative, I've removed Hayden revenues from the budget, and I've also removed the request for a Hayden lieutenant as well. So just keep that in your mind as the context of looking at this. Last year, the City of Hayden, well, in FY25, the City of Hayden's contract for us is $1,144,000. I have proposed to them $1,812,893. That is the cost of the personnel, which is eight deputies, a lieutenant, and the average cost detective. That does not include a COLA for next year, however, but that is the personnel costs plus a 40% markup for overhead. So we'll see what they come back with, and at that time, the Board can decide if they're acceptable of the revenue number from Hayden.
What, can you put that number out again?
$1,812,893 is what I have proposed to their city administrator, and that's the cost of the personnel plus a 40% markup for overhead, and that's eight deputies, a lieutenant, and an average cost detective. And we're not charging them for the purchase of any vehicles. Instead, we're including an overhead rate of depreciation in the overhead markup, so the proposal wouldn't be for them to purchase outright any vehicles for us.
And can you just describe a little bit what that additional overhead includes?
Yeah, so it includes overhead for administration, command staff like captains and the sheriff, records, civil, the operating budgets of patrol and detectives. It doesn't include anything for dispatch, though. So it includes overhead costs of basically the administrative side of running a law enforcement agency prorated on a per-deputy basis.
Thank you. Any questions about that? No? Okay. Thanks.
So that's where we're at with the preliminary summary. Now, I've printed multiple copies for you with different COLA scenarios, and they're all stapled together. So the next one is if we were to do a 1% COLA, the 3% tax increase, we would be $296,000 deficit right now, again, without the Hayden revenue. 1.5% COLA is a $645,000 deficit. 2% COLA is a $992,000 deficit. And then 2.5% COLA is $1.3 million deficit. Hopefully, that makes sense. That's where we're sitting right now. I'm going to go into the requests per elected official summary, which should be the second document in your packet. At the top, this shows the budget requests from every elected official, and then the corresponding change over their FY25 adopted budgets. And then down at the bottom, I added a new section to consolidate all of the budget cuts that the elected officials have made so far. And when I say budget cuts, I'm referring to any decreases to their budget requests that they have made after they submitted their budget to the auditor's office. So not included in these cut numbers is going to be any departments that submitted their budgets at an already reduced rate over last year. Okay? Hopefully, that makes sense. So these numbers in red are only the cuts that departments have made subsequent to submitting them to the auditor for budget deliberations. So when you look at personnel cuts, the assessor, the Board has cut $286,000 so far of his request. The B O C C is showing as a $41,000 increase, and that is because Community Development originally had a request to freeze a position, but then they cut that request because they decided they needed that position, so you're now showing as an increase because of that. But they did turn around and freeze another position, so that's helping bring down the increase amount you're showing there. And then the other elected official that has cut, the Sheriff has cut $1 million of personnel requests. I think most of those the Sheriff has voluntarily cut from the budget. And then when we look at B budget, the elected officials that have made cuts to their B budgets, the assessor so far, zero cuts off of what they submitted for FY26. The B O C C is showing as an increase because of the increase in ICrimp that was added subsequent to the submission of your budget and the increase for the independent auditor that was made, and that is being offset by other cuts. You have made cuts, and they're helping reduce the amount that was increased for ICrimp and I Bailey. The clerk has cut $14,000 in B budget. The coroner has cut $147,000 out of his B budget, which I really appreciate. The coroner was very receptive to looking at expenditure trend and reducing his budget within trend. And I did explain to him that if he were to run out of funds for autopsies next year, he can come to the Board and have that discussion. The District Court, the TCA, has cut $9,000 from her budget. Prosecutor cut $5,000. The Sheriff has cut $490,000 from their B budget, and then the Treasurer has cut $36,000. When we look at new programs, this is primarily onboarding costs for new positions. The assessor has had $3,100 cut in onboarding costs, and the Sheriff has cut $596,000 in new programs and onboarding costs. And then capital, the Board cut the $12,000 request for the assessor, and then the B O C C is showing as an increase because you moved the KC North capital requests from the Sheriff under the B O C C, so that now shows as an increase to the Board. So you would net that with the Sheriff's decrease to show the Sheriff's true capital expense decreases $218,000. And the Sheriff also cut $20,000 of a request for a lease software. Hopefully, that makes sense. I just wanted to try and give credit in a fairly clear manner to the elected officials who have made cuts thus far.
Thank you. Are there any questions? I have a question. I just want to make sure on the B budget, the cuts that you received?
Yeah.
Did they, did they end up with a final number that was consistent with previous years so that we don't have a cut that's way below?
Too low. I did try to review five-year trend for all of the line item cuts that were made, and there were a couple from the Sheriff's Office that I didn't end up doing because I felt they were too low, specifically some training line items, so they decided to keep those as is. But for the most part, I felt that the reductions were fairly in line with trend. Some maybe were a little low, but the departments assured me that they had good reason that they wouldn't need the money, so.
So is that reflected, all those cuts are reflected in here already?
Yes, they are. Yes.
All right. Thank you.
All right. I did receive priority lists from the remaining elected officials and departments that I hadn't yet, I believe. Airport and Building and Grounds, I'm still waiting on. We've been playing phone tag with Building and Grounds, and then Airport, I guess, just must be, have a lot going on. And so we did receive the priority list from the assessor as well, which is great. I would like to go into talking about a couple budgets that I feel could be cut further based on expenditure trend. Specifically, I'd like to look at the SWAT budget. And I did discuss this with the Sheriff's Office, and they said they have reasons for not reducing it. So specifically, their ammunition line and then their travel and training are all budgeted a little high compared to actual trend. So, for example, per diem, the highest they've spent so far in almost three years is $671, and it's budgeted at $3,700. They have spent nothing in three years on airfare, but that is budgeted at $2,200. The highest they've spent in three years on lodging is $1,500, and that is budgeted at $8,000, actually, for next year. And then they have spent only $138 on miscellaneous expenses, and then seminars, the highest they've spent is $5,900 in three years. They spent hardly anything this year. So I just felt overall those could come down a little bit based on trend, but I wanted to have a conversation between Captain Heil and the Board if the Board wants to cut these lines down to trend or not.
Captain Heil, did you want to talk about some of these prospective cuts?
Yes, Commissioner. So the training and travel, we complete the training and travel worksheet, and we're trying, we have required classes we need for the different disciplines, whether explosive breaching or less lethal. We try to find classes that are posted already across the country, and at the same time, we also try to host these classes or get with Spokane, Spokane County to host the classes closer. So we're going to the classes, but we're finding them closer, so we can't, you know, the ones that are already posted online are guaranteed that they're going to be going. It's not always a guarantee we can get them closer, but if we can find them closer, it saves on all the travel and airfare and everything because Spokane is drive time every day or if we have them local. This year, or 2023 was an anomaly. Out of the overall SWAT budget, every other year, SWAT budget has been spent within $4,000 of the budget. And then this year, the reason the, all the training is so low is because they opted to purchase new vests because all the vests expired, and they put their money towards that, so the budget overall will be, again, close to being spent, just not on the line items that they planned for. But coming in next year, we will need the training for all of those different disciplines as well. And then the ammunition gun supplies, we plan out the training, how much ammo we use every year, and we've been coming in a little lower because the county side of the SWAT team doesn't have as many people as we are allotted, but we plan for having ammo for everybody if the team was full. And the team has now added members, so we're going to be using more ammo because there's more people shooting. And then especially after this last incident, the amount of gas and smoke and chemicals that we utilized, we're going to have to backfill that as well.
Any questions? No? Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So do you want to leave their budget as it is, or do you feel like making some cuts based on expenditure trend is what you want to do at this point? What would you like to do?
Thoughts on this?
Obviously, we want to make cuts as much as we can, but next Wednesday, we have another budget meeting, correct? Okay. I mean, most of the guys, I'd like our SWAT people to be trained.
Commissioner Eberlein? Keep it in there.
Okay, we'll leave it as is. All right. Next, I would like to go to the personnel summary. This is printed in your packet. It's the one that starts with 1A numbered on the line. And so I wanted to go back to the prosecutor's requests. I know at the last meeting, there was some outstanding questions about giving the extra steps in addition to the grades. Is the prosecutor here?
Stan Mortensen for the record. I have to excuse my memory. We referred to this as a F S Y?
F S L A.
F S L A. I believe there would be one issue if the steps were not included in this.
No, I'm sorry. It might be F L S A, but it's those in some order.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so... I don't want to open up the county liability.
Is it for only one of these positions, prosecutor, or all three?
Just one.
Do you know which one it is?
I have that number.
Okay. Somewhere else. Okay.
Yeah.
There any thoughts on this? This is definitely going to be an issue if we don't accommodate. This is regarding the steps. Is that correct?
It's a potential issue. Wouldn't know until we know.
Because I think we're looking at two, or maybe one could be a possibility, or does it have to be two?
With this one, it would need to be two steps to alleviate a potential issue.
So the one that's the two additional steps, that's the new hire that's coming on in August?
No. It would be the...
Because that's the one getting two additional steps?
Okay, then it would just be one.
So it's the one getting one additional step?
Okay, yes.
It's the employee getting one additional step?
My mistake.
Okay. So you're saying that there would be the F S L A issue for this one, the one that's getting one additional step?
Correct.
Okay. But the other two, there's no F S L A impact?
Correct.
Well, the other one is not a step. Number two is not a step, and then the number three would be two additional steps.
Yeah, 75A would not be an F S L A issue then.
It's hard for me to tell without talking about employee numbers, to be honest.
Does anyone have any thoughts on this, or anyone else? Commissioner Eberlein? What's that?
Cogitating.
What are your thoughts?
Well, I think what's important is that whatever we end up with, that there is a policy that can be articulated for the entire county so that when we do have these exceptions, we can say exactly why and under what set of conditions so that if this were to arise again, we could say yea or nay based upon that criteria. And that's the part I'm a little unsure about is what exactly is this criteria? And, I mean, it's just budgetary right now that we're talking about. It's not actual. So I guess my question to you, Stan, would be, you know, is there a policy that would be needed to articulate this such that we wouldn't have an issue in the future with a different employee as to why something was or was not given?
All I can say is what I'm trying to do is within policy, and it's consistent with what I've been doing the last two years.
Yeah. Well, maybe, maybe we can talk offline, and we'll just keep it in for now.
Okay. I'll keep them as is for now with the goal that before the next budget meeting, which is on July 23rd, that's our final budget deliberations meeting, so before that meeting, if prosecutor and commissioners could talk offline, that way at the July 23rd meeting, we could make a decision. That would be good.
Okay.
Perfect. And then I did want to go back to the Community Development submitted an additional employee to freeze. It's a planner two position. It is line 49B, and so I assume the Board's okay with approving that for the budget.
Yes.
Freezing the position.
Yes.
And then I wanted to talk about the employee bonus requests from AMP and Parks and Waterways. Both departments have indicated they'd be willing to cut the requests for bonuses if the Board were to approve them to give their employees a day off. So I wanted to bring that to the Board for discussion.
Yeah. So essentially, it would be an administrative day off instead of the customary bonus that they give to their hard workers at the end of the calendar year, I think, is when they normally give it.
I don't know when they usually give them.
Yeah. So that's just one option that would still allow those two directors to have that kind of ability within their departments, and yet it would actually be a savings to the county.
Commissioner Eberlein, you good with that?
Yes.
There you go.
All right. So I'm going to mark those as cut from the dollars from the budget, and the Board will coordinate with their departments to instead give those employees a day off. And then I wanted to circle back to the assessor's personnel requests. I did receive his priority list since we last spoke, and his priority list is all of his personnel requests, and they are all of priority one, and I believe the Board is on that email as well. So you have that information, and I wanted to give the Board and the assessor the opportunity to dialogue regarding his requests.
Hey, you know, one of the things that stood out to me was the fact that there was no COLA on there as a priority. So that seems to not even be on the priority list.
Commissioners, this, Bayla Kovacs, County Assessor?
Yeah, just a moment, please.
Okay.
Another thing was that the spreadsheet, which I presume, the way I would look at it, is that the item that's on the top is the most important, and the item that's on the bottom is the least important. Because that's what we asked for at the last meeting. Are there any questions at this point, or? Assessor Kovacs?
Commissioners, Bayla Kovacs for the record. First of all, I'd like to preface what I'm about to say by saying I don't envy your job of putting together a budget. It's a difficult task with all competing priorities. The Commissioners are not alone in wanting to save the county funds. That's, that's the duty on the part of every elected official. And so I have not waited for the Board to ask for cost savings, to begin saving money. The budget we submitted is an extremely lean budget, and everything that was submitted in our budget is a priority. We are at the point where if we don't make these additions of the five personnel that we're asking for, in addition to everything else, which does include COLAs, it does include career progressions, it does include step increases, which is to the discretion of the Board. But if we don't do that, we're going to be, again, having problems. We have a, a five-year cycle to get appraisers trained and to achieve the level of competency to do their jobs. I would like to remind the Board that the Commissioners can levy up to 0.04% of the, of the taxable value of properties, which is the ceiling. I recognize that's the ceiling. That dollar amount is about $19 million. We are not anywhere near that. Our request is $6.8 million, and that represents a $139,000, and according to the latest numbers that I, excuse me, $139,000 decrease of this proposed budget versus the current year. And according to the latest numbers that I had received, that puts us in the lead position. I know, I recognize that the Budget Office has announced that there have been some additional cuts since then. But when you present a lean budget, there simply is no place else to cut. And, and so that is my position. It is, Commissioner Matarri, your perception in the order listed is not correct because you have to list something some way. There's no other way to list something, and it's listed that way.
Well, it's not about my perception. It was about my request, okay? And that there is always something. There's always a cutoff. There's always a cutoff somewhere. There's a, there's a physical limitation. And so because you didn't give it in that sequence, right? Because one of these positions is more important than another position. They may have importance, but if you were given the choice between one or the other, there would be a decision to be made. So it's not a perception. It was a request that you just chose not to honor, so I'm going to go ahead and look at it the way that, how I requested it.
But please don't do that outside of the information input that you're receiving from me, because the budget request is coming from me. And I'm telling you that all five FTE positions are equally prioritized, so you can't do it, you can't perceive it in a vacuum.
Thank you. So what are your thoughts up here about this? I mean, we have a position that has been open for over a year in essence that we talked about last time, which I don't think that condition has changed. We're talking about adding more of the same position. We're talking about converting a tech to the same position. So if we did the conversion, there would be two open positions in the Appraiser Department, and they would have to be filled. The question is, can those even be filled? And so I would argue, let's start with that step first and then address future needs after that. That would be my position on it.
I, I would agree that we, and hopefully, I'm not misstating this, but again, they have one open position, and then they, one conversion would be the two Appraiser ones that we would go forward with.
Mm-hmm.
And then I would actually go to the Appraiser threes, and I don't know, it just, it's hard pressed to me, you know, hearing about the challenges of training and, and that kind of stuff, to see that one, two, three, four, five, six Appraiser twos are going to be Appraiser threes in this next budget year. in this next budget year. So I, I suppose I would want to take the ones, maybe keep the ones that are happening this October, because that's the closest, and then maybe the February One, and then the ones that happen mid-year, that we address those mid-year, and we find out where they're at.
Well, that puts us back into the mid-year request.
I, I understand that, but again, you have, you have one that's open 388 days, so there's all that salary savings for the people who've been doing the work.
Have these career progressions been accounted for, as far as what point in the year you plan on?
Yeah, yeah, they are.
We didn't have that information over, they should have been.
Yeah, they're all prorated, yeah, so you have two Octobers, a February, a May, and two Septembers.
Yeah, so, I mean, I'd just assume keep those, we know we're gonna have them. We need the budget for it.
Well, I mean, we don't, we don't know, that's if these people get to that step. Go through the training, go through certification.
Well, what's the likelihood of that happening? I mean, you should know that, right?
So, Commissioner Duncan, which positions are you referring to?
All the twos going to threes.
Twos going to threes?
Yes.
Yeah, that, that, that training has been completed, so I would say the answer to your question is 100% assurance.
So all twos have completed the training to become threes as of today.
There's, there's not a certification requirement to go to a two to a three, there's just the certification from the state that we use, this would be more of a, a ten-year point, they've hit their time, and this is due to kind of a bulk hiring that we did in the past, so a lot of these twos are converting over, that's why they're prorated, that's to their anniversary date.
But if you have an exceptional performer who really understands everything, and then you have one who's just been in the seat and really isn't progressing technically, you're both, you're gonna promote both of them?
No, this is with in mind, you know, we asked our residential manager to take a look at this, and, and who would be likely in the next fiscal year, so this isn't, this isn't everybody who's gonna hit that point, that's the people he believes are going to be there next year, he's very confident in that, and if we have somebody who's a really high performer, like we do, they, they get fast-tracked, and we do have a request like that in there, kind of taking them from a three to a lead, that's that request, we have somebody who's been doing exceptionally, so we have taken those things into account, and the performance of the individuals, it just seemed better for this budget cycle, and, you know, how are we gonna get to these points, to have ten-year breakpoints and say, okay, you know, for our budget proposal, when could we do this next year, and it would be that, that anniversary.
It's also based not just on time and position, but it's on the work that they're doing, the complexity of the appraisal work that they're doing, whether it's supervised or not, it's competency, so it's all those factors taken into consideration.
So, this is not everyone in that department, these are the people that you've looked at individually, that you see this happening because of their current performance and professional level of competency.
Where they're now and where they're progressing to, yes.
See, I would just assume keep that.
Okay, but if we do, they don't have to come before us, I don't think, I don't know if that'd be an HR question, I suppose, they would just be able to promote without coming before us, yeah, HR's saying yes. Okay, just so we're aware.
Well, I mean, we can always look back at it a year from now and say, how good were they?
Yeah.
All right, so it sounds like the board agrees to keep in the career progressions.
Good with that.
The two that we haven't really decided is line 31A is converting an appraisal technician two to a business intelligence analyst. What are the board's thoughts on that one?
How come all the techs seem to be getting converted? Is there a reason for that? It sounds like a, kind of a sea change in the way you're doing your operations.
I, I don't disagree with that, Commissioner Matarri. The, the nature of hiring has been difficult for the tech position, I think maybe the way it's, it's labeled. We don't get as many applications for those, but we get a lot of applications for clerks, so that kind of sparked a conversation where we said, what are the real differences between these duties? Can we identify one? Can we separate these out, because we have clerks one, two, and three, and we have techs one, two, and three, what are, what are the tangible differences? So we've been kind of delineating those out. This position specifically, this, this person's operating so far above what I would classify tech two work to be, and that's generally interfacing at a higher level in terms of computer software. There's some, you know, Excel mastery and mastery over the various systems that we use, we would expect a tech to do, we wouldn't expect a clerk to do, but they were kind of intermixed in the past, so an effort that we're making is to separate these out, get this better defined, what's a clerk role, what's a tech role, and get this closer to the actual work that's being performed, because right now, we have tech twos doing a wide range.
Well, it's, it's potential, it's capabilities, this individual has Python programming capabilities, and that just opens up so many more opportunities for us. So it's, it's recognizing the talents, the abilities, the skillsets that this individual brings to the table.
And you already have somebody in mind for this particular position?
Give you the person who's currently in it.
I'm sorry, what?
There's a person already in this position, so.
Position conversion, so the person doing the work is just gonna be converted to that.
Okay. So what's left? We got some Appraiser clerks, appraisal clerks and residential appraisers.
So, do you want to leave in the business intelligence analyst conversion for now?
That's what it sounds like, that's, I mean, look, I don't want to get into telling you how to do your job, it's just a matter of, you know, are you gonna be able to demonstrate, you know, some sort of gain by making this conversion and doing this?
And I think that was my frustration, is the year that he converted the two technicians to BIAs, he came back and had to ask for a technician, so it wasn't a gain. So that's the, the frustrating part that I see. So we just keep saying, yes, 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 but then more and more people are needed, so, I don't.
Well, we're only looking at what, how many positions are we even considering here at this point? Because we've got one open on the Appraiser, there's a conversion from a tech to an Appraiser.
Right, but this, this is a tech to a BIA. Appraisal tech two to a business intelligent, intelligence analyst.
Okay. How many techs do you have left?
Between, I think we have, right now we have four, not including mapping, mapping has its kind of its own structure, so we've got, you know, timber, a current tech two, and then we've got two in the front office.
Okay. And you're pretty good with this setup, converting another tech into a BIA?
Yeah, I, I wouldn't imagine we would need any more BAs, this is, this would kind of be the final division of the duty at a higher data and development level.
Commissioners, I would like to clarify that the, our request for the new FTEs, we had requested two Appraiser, appraisal clerks, and, and that's because it would be lifting off some of the burden on the, on the appraisers. One of the, the data graphs that we had available to us to present in the last meeting, which we were not, did not have the chance to present it, it showed a shift in our overtime from, away from the techs to, onto the appraisers. And, and so what we're trying to do is, is, is reduce and eliminate some of the ministerial tasks, the clerical work, off of the appraisers, to, so that they can focus more on the higher technical appraisal work. And that's part of what we were talking about in terms of delineating the differences between the clerk and the techs.
Bela, can I ask, were the techs doing that work before, though?
Depending on how far back you go. We were not, i- in our office, we, we did not have staff that was performing the highly technical, and, the work that the BIAs are doing now in terms of process improvements. So that's, that is what has been the change. So, the, quite a few years back, we had two individuals that were doing, actually, it was three individuals, that were doing, they had a lot of overtime, and they were doing a lot of the ministerial paperwork in support of the appraisers.
And that's when we didn't have a lot of.
Plus a lot of manual data entry.
Right, and we did not have a lot of mistakes back then, where we had to keep correcting for monthly BOEs.
That's not correct, some of those mistakes just didn't come to light.
So which line item are we on right now?
I believe we're still on the business intelligence analyst, which is 31A. I have yet to hear two commissioners in agreement on what they want to do with that request.
Commissioner Arbeloa?
So the assessor is requesting to convert an appraisal technician two to a business intelligence analyst. That's line 31A, that's what we've, I think, been discussing.
So that was a conversion, an appraisal technician two conversion?
To largely someone who's working with computer data tables. And this will alleviate workload with your appraisers, correct?
The BIA conversion, is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
It'll allow us to retain an individual with an extremely valuable skillset.
But, but.
Even at a BIA level, we're getting at a great discount at the county.
But you're, you're, it's all in an effort to decrease workload on your appraisers?
Yeah, that is correct.
To modernize, yes.
Okay.
Innovate, make improvements, yes.
Okay, so I think with that, the open position and the conversion for another Appraiser, you know, there is some relief that's being provided there, and now it's just a matter of filling the positions, and then looking at the operation and deciding, okay, how much more efficiently is it running? So, because I would assume that your metric of number of appraisals per Appraiser will remain the same, right? Even if you add this BIA, but this BIA is supposed to actually reduce the workload per Appraiser, so that's, that's a variable that wasn't in that chart that you showed us. And, and so that's why, you know, a lot of times, whenever people are showing me things, it's not what they're telling me, it's what they're not telling me. That is the $64,000 question, if you will, to understand what it is that is really happening in that chart, in those numbers. But I'm okay with a BIA conversion, because with that open position and with the other conversion for the Appraiser, that is what I would argue is a decent amount of relief, given our constraints.
I concur.
All right, sounds like two out of three commissioners agree to leave the BIA conversion, and to leave the conversion to a residential Appraiser One. And then, was there any further discussion the board wanted to have on the assessor's other requests, the promotions for the mapping specialists, the promotion for the mobile home Appraiser, or the new FTE request for a commercial Appraiser, given that you've seen the assessor's priority list now? Or are you comfortable leaving all of those in the budget?
So, as far as the commercial one goes, I guess my understanding was you had your lead or your manager had, had a caseload, is that still the, the case?
I'm sorry, clarify your question, the manager was doing the caseload?
Yeah, so in your commercial department, how many appraisers do you have right now?
We have three commercial appraisers in specialized commercial, and we have one timber Appraiser, and we have a mobile home Appraiser, and we have personal property.
Okay, but you have a manager?
We have a manager.
My understanding is the manager did some work, I mean, we.
The manager was focused mostly on section 42.
Okay, so, what is not going to get done if we are unable to fill this commercial Appraiser Three position, this new position?
So, to speak to some of the board's other concerns, there are no vacancies in our specialized division, we're fully stocked there. The thing that we're trying to address is pulling the income specialty together in, in one place, right now it's spread out through a variety of different positions, residential does some multifamily, they do duplexes, apartments are in, you know, some hands, the geos are kind of spread out, and it, that discipline of appraisal is very specific, and takes a lot of time and effort to do, and so when I come back to reevaluation, we're getting reacquainted with it, and we're getting enough of these through new development, new apartment buildings going up, that we really need somebody who's dedicated to figuring out income, having good income models, and staying on top of these things, because right now, it's kind of crashing on us like a wave when we have to do income, and we have to get re-familiar with it, and we do the best that we can, but there's so much of it, and it's hitting so many different divisions, that this workload is, is really spiking, which is why we thought it was appropriate to add a commercial Appraiser to the team who specializes in income. We didn't need to rewrite the job description, because they all do income to some level, we just want somebody who could take this off of the, the other appraisers as, as a load.
Couldn't you convert, or just have one of your commercial appraisers just focus on income, and that way, I mean, because it's, you're not articulating more workload, you're articulating, I want a specialty, and the workload is remaining largely the same?
Well, the workload is increasing, as we're, as we're going on, we're growing, and a lot of that growth is income properties, so we're seeing more of those things being built, and so this, this additional pressure on the team keeps going up, and it's not being done to the full standard that we'd like it to be done, it's probably one of those areas that needs a lot more appraisal work, needs a lot more study than we can give it, and so it's, it's a sub-discipline that we really need somebody to specialize on, it's kind of like mobile homes, if we just had all of our residential appraisers do mobile homes and took that away, yeah, the workload gets distributed, but you really need somebody who's specialized in it, otherwise it's not gonna be done to the level that it probably should be.
How critical is it?
It's extremely critical, a, a huge amount of the value is derived from commercial property, and so if we're not fully on top of commercial property, that, that additional tax load gets spread to residential, and so if we're not assessing them correctly, that tax burden gets shifted, and so it's, it's very critical that we get commercial in line, and we're, we're hammering on income.
Don't you use income as part of the overall assessment, that there's also like replacement and cost and things like that?
Sure, but that's property-specific, it's gonna be whatever use that you're, you're looking at primarily, there'll be a better appraisal methodology typically.
So, do you have somebody in mind already that could fill a commercial Appraiser Three, or you need to hire off the street?
We, we would consider all options, we, we'd, we'd like to see if someone, ideally, to get somebody with that commercial income approach experience, as was discussed this morning in the IAC committee meeting, it's not that often you find a certified Appraiser that has the skillsets and the knowledge and so forth, so, so we're certainly open to promoting from within and training, but ideally, we'd like to see what the market has to offer.
So, if we offered a one?
I think, I, I know where you're going, Commissioner Duncan, I, I think what I'd like to do is, is, the focus of this is so refined with the income approach, I'd like to see if we can find that talent out there now, and, and certainly, if, we're not gonna hire someone into a three position if they, they don't have the skillsets, or they don't have the knowledge or the, or the capability, so obviously, we would come back to the board and downgrade it if that were the case.
But in the meantime, we've already taxed for it.
Yeah, I would suggest that we keep it on for, at least till the next budget meeting. I understand the value of the position in your office, I understand, you know, the importance of being able to value a commercial property through income, cap rates, all that kind of stuff, so, but I would be inclined to go with a one, to lower the budget, if we keep this position, and have you come before us, if you say, look, we can't find anybody to fill this. And ask for a little more.
We would be committed to doing that.
Yeah.
All right, so it sounds like two commissioners want to lower this to a step one, am I understanding that?
That's fine.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think, if you guys are saying it's a one, it'd be, the, the grade would change? Are you talking about the step or the grade?
Great, we're, uh, well, neither, the, a commercial Appraiser One instead of a three, so, so it will change the grade as far as.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry, she just had marked step, the step and not the grade, so I just wanted to clarify that.
Commercial Appraiser One instead of three, and keep it at a step five, whatever the grade goes down to?
Sure.
Yeah.
Hire up to a step five.
Yeah.
All right, so, and then you're still comfortable leaving in the mobile home Appraiser promotion on line 30A, and then the mapping specialist promotions on lines 43 and 44A?
If you do it for the twos to go to threes, then you gotta leave them all in.
I, I mean, these are professional progression, you already have evaluated who's in your office, they're already, they're already moving towards that.
Yes, Commissioner, the, the, those two mapping specialists would fall into a similar vein as our appraisers, so they will get certified, have a state certification by the time we roll around next year, so that one to a two is, is reflecting that certification.
And what, that point in time during the fiscal year, when you expect that to happen?
Yeah, yeah, I believe so.
Okay.
All right, so that takes care of all the outstanding personnel requests I wanted to cover. Lastly, I want. Lastly, I wanted to go a little bit over the assessor's E-budget, similar to the way that we discussed SWAT, the SWAT budget earlier in the meeting. There are just some lines that I wanted the board to consider reducing or discuss with the assessor, just based on what I'm seeing on expenditure trend. So you don't have this printed, but I do have this on my screen. And so I'll start with the appraisal budget, and there's just a few lines here that I think are a little high based on trend, such as vehicle maintenance. The biggest one is legal services, and so the assessor has budgeted $140,000 for that next year, and based on my understanding, a lot of those legal expenses have been getting booked to this witness payments line. So when a, when an invoice for legal services is submitted to the accounts payable department, you know, an attorney invoice is an attorney invoice. My staff don't know if it's an attorney invoice for a witness payment or for other legal services, and so it's, it's, we rely on the departments to code them between the two accounts, depending on what the expense is. I believe a lot of the legal service ones, just based on some conversation I've had with the assessor and his staff, have gotten coded to witness payments. So given the trend that I see in the witness payments line, I thought that perhaps a trend expenditure of around $30,000 was more in line with trend. But again, $140,000 has been budgeted, so I wanted to open that up for discussion with the board and the assessor.
Thoughts on that?
How many ongoing cases do you have right now today?
We have five.
Three Cabela's.
Two Cabela's. I prefer not to discuss, if we want to talk about litigation, I would prefer to go in executive session, but.
Well, this is all public information if it's a court case that's been filed against the county.
I understand, but there are aspects that we have already discussed in an executive session.
So I'll, I'll bring it back out one step higher. In order to have something in your legal line item, you have to come before the board because there has to be put on the record the need, the demonstrated need, and that is in concert with the prosecutor. So I would be fine taking this out and.
Well, we have done that.
You took out the $140,000?
We have a, we have a resolution from the Board of County Commissioners, which I provided all that information to you June 19th in an email, as per your request. And then we have three confidential memorandums that I received from the board.
Well, this just goes to, we can have that executive session before the 23rd.
Yep.
So we can add an executive session after the business meeting on July 22nd, and you can give us an update.
I won't be in town.
Well, then it'll have to be the week after.
And that'll be the week after the budget.
That would be too late for my statutory budget deadline.
I mean, we have contingency funds for these types of things too.
We do.
And, you know, so I would argue that we just not worry about the legal funds, fees, you know, in the budget right now, and deal with it on a case-by-case basis as a contingency.
Yep. I, I would agree, so.
Okay.
That's $140.
Sounds like the commissioners agree to reduce that line down to zero, if I'm understanding correctly, okay. I'm going to go through some other lines, I know this might be a little bit tedious, but this is exactly what I've done with all the other departments, you know, so I do want to go through some other expenditure trends. So again, I have some outstanding questions I'll discuss with Dyson later regarding their printing and postage lines, but going to office supplies, the highest they've spent seems to be 2,500, but there's been 6,000 budgeted, so I recommended reducing to 2,600. Vehicle maintenance and expenses, the highest that's been spent is a little over $4,000, so I recommended reducing, and right now it's budgeted at 6,300, I recommended reducing to 4,500. The travel, I'm not seeing that anything was spent in '24, very little, $194 in '25, but we do have $26,000 budgeted for 2026. The highest that was spent was 4,600 back in 2023. So I did recommend reducing all those lines down closer to trend for a total of 4,800. Subscriptions, the highest I'm seeing is about 11,500, which is what I recommended for trend, which would reduce that 1,700. So the additional line items that I've just now covered would be $28,000 in savings, as the board wanting to agree to these cuts.
I'd first like to get the assessor's thoughts on that beforehand, because clearly there's historical trends, and then there's what you're asking, so why the difference?
Commissioners, can I, I beg your forgiveness, I'd like to go back one more time to visit the legal, because the commissioners have signed a contract, have created an obligation, and we are working with an attorney under contract now. And so if we, if the commissioners set that budget to zero in legal expenses, I have an obligation that was executed by the Board of County Commissioners, now I will have no means to pay it.
That's, that's not true. The stuff that we've already authorized is coming out of Fund 46, we just haven't given the auditor their information to put that where it needs to go.
Okay, so you're saying it'll be.
What has already been authorized.
I'm just concerned that when I get a bill.
We've authorized a certain amount for your cases.
Which we'll talk about in executive session.
Okay, all right, thank you, I understand, all right.
I mean, you're not asking for more, are you?
No, I'm asking for what the board had already committed to, that's really all I'm asking for.
Well, you don't need that in there. So do you want to answer the question related to the other items?
I can speak to, I can speak to travel. So we've actually had a lot of success and things to, things to bail in, some, some interactive stuff with the state tax commission with hosting classes up here. Something that we're looking at is, there was a long time cost of sending people down for summer school or winter school, so, you know, plane ticket, hotel, all those things. The reason we still had it in the budget is we have a lot of twos going to threes, and the types of education that they try and do up here is more mass appeal, you know, 100 level, 200 level, and now we're getting more specialized things to do their classes, so it's likely that we'll send additional people. And so that was a calculation based off of how many people we would need to possibly send, and it's not guaranteed that they'll do the classes up here. So if we get into a position where they're not going to do the classes and we have to send people, then we'll incur those expenses to send people, and we have to continue re-education every two years, and it kind of resets continually. So we keep to have, having to keep sending people and keep up continuing education. So that's why we still have those items in there.
The other concern is the pool or the share of, of newer appraisers that we have on staff that need the training is, is increasing. And so we, we need to train all those appraisers as we hire them, so we need the training costs in our budget so that we can do that.
How many people did you hire in '24?
Oh, I believe we had, I don't recall sitting here, I think we had two or three appraiser positions.
Yeah, 2024 is the year where none was spent in training, and so far this year, $194 has been spent. And I guess I should say the travel for training.
I mean, I hear what you're saying, but your, the reality of the numbers don't reflect your statements, they don't support it.
But we've had more local training offered here, is what we've done.
Yeah.
So we, we've been successful in doing that.
I think the proposed cuts right here are to travel, so not the train, I haven't highlighted the training one, so this is travel that's usually.
So we just don't know if the tax commission will be able to send people, I mean, it's not always a guarantee. We have had courses that were planned that were canceled on us. And so we've had, we've been then in a position to scramble to try and get alternate training for those individuals.
Thoughts? How critical is it?
I'm sorry?
How critical is this situation?
It, it's, well, it's continuing education, so if we don't keep our appraisers trained, then they become uncertified and they can't work without supervision. You have to be a certified appraiser in order to do the evaluation.
They become uncertified? So are there CLEs required every?
You have to.
Two years, every two years.
Continuing education requirements over the course of two years, and if, if they don't keep up on that continuing education, then they're in jeopardy.
Yeah.
Using that certification.
And again, this is just the travel lines, I'm not, I'm not suggesting reducing the training line.
It's getting down in the bushes.
You want to make cuts, I'm bringing you cuts, and if you don't want to make them, you don't have to.
What about half? I mean, you don't have any historical basis on this, I mean, I, I hear you, but, you know, trying to find a way where, no one has a crystal ball, no one can see exactly what's going to happen in the future, but, you know, we're really trying to get the budget down by everyone so that we can look at more options on the COLA side and, and things like that.
I would concede to that, I mean, I've, I've been doing that already, but on, on what you're saying to, to lower the budget, I'm willing to concede to that.
I mean, we, we discussed where we were right now, so.
Right.
I, I think if we run into the issue where we're having trouble getting training, we might just come back to the board if there's, we're running into that, we have to send more people when we have that, that budget item.
Perfect, yeah, and again, this is not training, this is just travel.
Yeah, sorry, the, the training.
The training is tied to the travel.
Right.
It's just that you're spending money on training, but you're not spending any money on travel, so that's why I had recommended, but it doesn't, does it sound, is the board okay with cutting the, these travel lines in half then?
Well, the assessor said yes, so.
Perfect, perfect. And then I had suggested a slight reduction to subscriptions. The trend, the highest trend is 11,000, but so far this year only 4,800 has been spent, so I just suggested reducing that, about $1,700.
I believe, if I'm, if I'm remembering correctly, without looking at the specific details, I believe that might be tied to a subscription, or a, a software subscription for Esri, I think.
It's, it's not, there's a separate account for software subscriptions.
Yeah, I think that covers our IAC dues. I don't, I don't foresee that going above what we have budgeted for, I think 11.5 would be okay.
Okay, perfect.
What I know about what we've got, what we've got going, unless they pull up, you know, your subscriptions going up 25%, I don't know where or something.
Awesome. I had had some similar recommendations to reduce the travel lines in the land records budget, just similar situations, expenditure trend was pretty significantly lower than what you have budgeted. And so I had recommended cutting that by about $6,900, which would be almost half. I had recommended cutting those roughly in half.
Assessor Kovacs?
I was just thinking that that training is a little bit more unique than the appraiser training, and what I, what, sitting here right now, what I don't know is, is how often is that training offered in a remote location like here in Cootie County? Or do we have to send those individuals to Boise?
Yeah, but that, you should kind of, well, I guess what was your basis for your numbers then?
For that budget right there?
Mm-hmm.
How much it would send, cost to send half?
Just the history.
For the people we needed to.
Yeah.
So if we had to send half in a year, what would that cost us?
So that's how you arrived at the number?
Yeah, yeah, that's what the lodging and everything would cost.
Do you usually send half every single year?
We haven't had to recently, it hasn't.
Are you going to have to next year?
Can you send?
I don't think so.
Can you send a quarter?
So if you're, if you're not gonna, if you're not gonna have to send half of them next year, would you be open to reducing these lines by half like I had suggested?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Okay.
Awesome. Okay, your printing supplies line, there's been no money spent out of there in three years, and the budget is $1,200. I had suggested reducing that to zero. That's okay, perfect. And then I have some small recommendations for the Post Falls and Coeur d'Alene DMV, based on trend, the reducing Coeur d'Alene DMV's printing supplies down to 370, which is more in line with trend, and then reducing their, their security services is a little high, it's budgeted at 5,000, but expenditure trend, the highest is 3,700.
Is that Post Falls or is that?
That's Coeur d'Alene.
Coeur d'Alene.
Yeah, we're, we're trying to stay ahead of the, the transport cost there, just because we've seen some increases in that, so we built in some, some year-over-year increases.
Are you okay if we keep it flat from last year, because, from FY '25, because it looks like you're not even going to spend your FY '25 amount?
I, I think that would be okay, we just might have to tune that if it goes up again.
I mean, there's no seasonality in this expense, right? There's not like a, you know, loaded in September or something?
No, it has to happen all the time, so.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm going to mark that one as flat with FY '25. And then the equipment repair for the Coeur d'Alene DMV, historic trend, the highest they've spent is $324, but you're budgeting 1650, so I had recommended reducing that to $350 based on trend.
We kept that, we put that in there in case we needed to replace some iPads that we had.
Are you going to replace the iPads?
I don't know, they may not break.
How does the board feel?
So we kept it in there as a contingency.
How long have you had the iPads?
They've had iPads since before I came here, so I know they rotated them out. I can't tell you right now when the last time was they rotated, I think they did rotate some out last year.
But, I mean, do you have them break on a recurring basis, or?
Not, not all the time, but that's, that's what we put in there, just in case that something happened, we could have some money to.
How many, how many iPads, two?
Each workstation, there's like eight windows, each workstation has one, plus the managers and the assistant managers.
I mean, how many are in there that you expect to break? Two? Is that what the dollar amount is?
Basically, if we had to replace them.
It might be helpful in the future to have like a replacement schedule, so you don't have to be so reactive.
Well, I think they do. You, you are replacing them on a, on a recurring basis, right?
I'll have to verify it.
That's what I thought, that's what I thought I heard the assessor say.
So I'll leave that one open to discuss with the DMV manager, maybe she knows specifically how many will get replaced next year. The Post Falls DMV, it seemed like the budget for electric and natural gas was pretty high, based on trend, it looks like the highest you guys have spent is 6,300, but the budget is 8,000, so I had recommended reducing down to 6,500.
I'm going to see if Shelley can come up here to speak to that, I know Shelley's been looking at our electrical and gas, especially for Post Falls.
So we're looking at the electric and natural gas budget for the Post Falls DMV. It looks like the trend of expenditure, the highest over the last, you know, two and three quarters years, the highest expenditure is 6,300, and the budget is 8,000, so I had recommended reducing down to 6,500.
What we have found is the water at the city at Post Falls keeps increasing, our water bill is astronomical in the Post Falls office.
And this is the line, this isn't the line for water.
Oh, that's not water?
Yeah, this is electric and natural gas.
Okay. It's just on the trends of, that they've increased, because even in '24 it was 60, I, I can't even see that figure, 63 is that?
So in.
It's about 6,400, yeah.
In '24 you spent 6,300.
So in '24 we spent 63, we haven't even gotten through, how much are we through this year so far?
So you only have three months left for this year, and you've spent $4,100 so far.
I cannot tell you how much electric's going to be, I was just trying to do my best guess, so. It never goes down, I, I don't, it's never gone down there at that location, so.
And you have it at 6,500?
They have it budgeted at 8,000 right now.
But you, your recommendation.
I had recommended 65, we could go up to 7,000, go up to 7,000.
I mean, it's a pretty big jump if it goes from six to 7,000 this coming year.
As long as if it goes up more than that, we, we can come back to the board.
Yeah, as long as that's fine, I just don't.
Of course you can, I mean, we're just trying to get your, you know, I mean, I realize that these, these larger numbers are like a security blanket, right? You know, because you want to have that extra little bit of play in there, in case something bad happens, but if we have a budget that's consistent with historical numbers, then we're working off something that's factual, and if something comes up that's unexpected, I don't see why this board wouldn't be extremely amenable to, you know, that kind of unexpected expense.
We've just been very receptive, and we hear the board when the board says no mid-year requests.
Yes.
So, so that was completely taken into account.
Well, if you, yeah.
And our budget.
If you cut that to 3,000, and then came back and said you need more money, that'd be a problem.
Yeah.
All right, so I'm going to mark that as reduced to 7,000.
Is that good?
The surveyor budget, just a few really small reductions based on trend, about $738 in office supplies, motor, fuel, and telephone. Telephone should be pretty consistent if it's a stipend, 540, 594, it's budgeted at 835, so I wasn't, wasn't sure if you're adding another phone or something to that line, or if you'd be okay reducing it down to trend to like 600?
You can change it to trend, but as far as the motor, fuel, and lubricants, the reason that was not used in the prior years was because he was doing those border chains, where they changed where the borders were for the different counties.
The Scharon.
He did not get to leave the office. He did not get to leave the office, so we had a dip quite significant for those two years prior. So that is why he would like to get back out in the field, and that is why the fuel is going to be higher than it was before, just to...
That's fair enough.
That's fine, keep it.
Pretty negligible.
And I think that's minimal as far as the motor and then the office supplies. He did tell me a few things that he needed to be able to purchase, and I just go by what he says. He's his own entity. I, I just put in what he asked. And then we also decreased all of his, he said he's going to be doing all of his education online and not be going. So we actually saved money in his budget, so in the, overall, we saved quite a bit in his budget by him not leaving to go get his education in Boise.
Perfect. And lastly, I'm going to touch on the admin budget. So merit system and awards, which is like employee gift cards and dinner, lunches, things like that. Historic trend, the highest is $2,600. Last year, the budget was $3,700, and in FY '26, it's being increased to $6,000. So given the expenditure trend, as well as they didn't even spend their budget last year, and then kind of the high jump from FY '25 to '26, I had recommended bringing this back down to like $2,600 based on expenditure trend, which would be a savings of $3,400.
We set that based off of what other departments said that they were allocating for merit per person.
So it just seems like a pretty significant increase per person based on expenditure trend? So they're just, that's why I'm bringing it to the attention of the board.
We were always trying to be very cognizant of, of this line item and, and stay under. We can go to the absolute max at every single line item if that's what we need to do to increase budget items. But when we heard, you know, I, I think in general, if there's a merit system, the board should probably say like, this is how much you get to spend per person, because otherwise every department's kind of just throwing a dart at it.
Yeah.
And plus, it should be performance-based, in my opinion.
Well...
Well, merit isn't. It's like Christmas dinner. It's, you know, when, when they used to have the great soup contest and, and stuff like that. So it wasn't...
Yeah, and I think the other challenge is the fact that unlike the private sector where you're focused on profit, and you can share some of that profit based upon the efforts, you know, so it's different. You know, what we're looking at is, you know, is there going to be a COLA, right? So all these little merit and, and bonus and all those other things, they, they kind of eat away at that, if you will.
We don't, we don't disagree in terms of, you know, that you have to try, you have to find every dollar that you can. All we're saying is if there's a merit system and we're going to be allocating funds to it, that should be consistent across the county.
And it's currently not consistent.
Agreed.
It's, it's, and it's not consistent.
So many other departments have reduced their merit lines, including my office, in an effort to get towards a COLA. And given the budget increase in this line, in addition to expenditure trend, that's why I'm bringing it forward.
Can you live with keeping it flat this year? Does that work?
All right, so we're going to keep that flat with FY '25. The other one that I had marked in admin was seminars and professional associations. So this is the line where training fees and conference fees come out of. Expenditure trend, the highest is $8,000 back in FY '23. So far this year, they've only spent $1,400. And then the budget is going up from $5,000 in FY '25 to $9,800 in FY '26. And so I had suggested reducing to a trend of $8,000.
This is admin.
Hey.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry about that. Typically, we allocate that based off of what we're getting for early bird pricing for the conferences that we are going to attend during the year. So sometimes this can fluctuate out if they get really expensive or, or not. I think we are changing the conferences we're going to. I don't think we're going to go to the one for Hementum because it wasn't very valuable the last time. We're placing that with an ESRI conference because there's some, some tools in that kit that we're going to want to. But that's based off of what we saw the price would be for us if we signed up early.
So does that mean we can reduce it?
No, I mean, the, the budget that we set is based off of what it would cost us.
What you expect.
What we expect, yeah.
The early bird, which is the lower one.
Uh-huh, okay. Thoughts?
So they're saying they can't.
Yeah, I mean, it's professional training, right?
Perfect. We'll keep it as is, and we can circle back to this next year and make sure that it all gets spent. So thank you for going through those with me. I just wanted to do that. That's what I've done with the other elected officials and departments up till now, and so I wanted to make every effort to get as many budget cuts as we could. The only other thing that I was going to tell the board was that you had asked for projections for the, increasing the cost of the health premiums across all the employee independent classifications. I am waiting on some rate information from Alliant, but I should be able to have those numbers for you at the next budget meeting on July 23rd.
Can you supply that to us before that date, if you get them done?
As soon as I have it done, sure, I can send it to you. And as soon as I hear back from the City of Hayden, I'll let the board know. I'm really hoping they'll come back with a number that is acceptable to the board that we can budget for next year.
So if they decide that they want to keep it at a million, but they cut officers or whatever, does that help our bottom line?
It might, but they do not, well, okay, I'm not going to speak for the City of Hayden.
Yeah, I'm just asking the question.
If they were to want to reduce their level of service, potentially that could help, but I'd have to go back and see how far they're reducing it, you know, what revenue number they propose.
But again, it's just the, whatever income they give us is going to help our bottom line.
It will help fund the services we provide them, which will help free up more tax authority to use for our own employees, for sure.
Okay.
And, yeah, like I said, their city administrator is really great, their finance director is really awesome. So I'm optimistic they'll come back with a good number for us. And that's all I had for today.
Think we got off light?
Yeah, because I was going to be like, I need a bathroom break, so if we're going to go on, we need to take a break.
No, I think that's it, unless you have any comments, Commissioner Revoline, questions? Okay.
I, I would just ask the board one quick question, and I want it to be quick, because like I said, I, I'm a gal and I got to go. Are we looking at some target? Are we looking at 3% with a 2% COLA? Are we looking at, you know, a, a 2% tax increase with a 1% COLA? What, what are my co-commissioners even striving for at this point?
Commissioner Revoline?
Well, it'd be nice if we could get, get it down further.
Well, what are you thinking? I mean, obviously somewhere between zero and three, where's your head kind of leaning towards?
Probably right in here.
What's here, Mark?
One and a half, one, one and a half, up to two.
Percent tax increase?
So between one and two.
Okay, and then what about COLA? Where does that leave you for COLA?
That's where I was sitting at on COLA.
Okay, so you're looking at a 1 and a half to 2% COLA, and then, so 3% tax increase?
No, I'm not going to go 3%.
Okay.
But you would go up to two.
Okay.
Yeah, because we got a lot of things to take care of, and they're not free.
Yeah, well, I think it just comes down to the numbers you get, where the Hayden contract comes in at, and then we'll be able to make some better decisions. All right, next up, public comment. Anyone want to speak? Anybody on the telephone? No? 2:47, meeting adjourned. Thank you.